I have Craig Doughty, Andrew Goschorn, Pat Valencia, Tim Mance, Dave Wright, Dave Havren, and Nathan Thomas. These are, this is 516, they, we share 516, Meg and I do. They meet at my church in Andrews Chapel. So I'm glad to have you guys here. Yeah, come on in. This might be the most we've ever had at once.
We're going to ask Troop 516 to lead us in the pledge.
There we go.
May I please join in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will scouts please join me in the oath of the law?
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to guide my country, to obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. God is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, forgiving, brave, clean, and reverent.
Thank you very much, guys. You can be seated.
While they're walking back, we wanted to mention, this is such a large troop of 83 scouts, we wanted to mention some of the Eagle Scout projects that are right now. One of them was by Matthew Arthur, he's a current sophomore at Stafford High School. His project was a memory garden at Dixon Smith Middle School. Mitchell Arthur, currently a sophomore at Stafford High School, his project was benches and a retaining wall with landscape around the sign at Dixon Smith Middle School Stadium. Andrew Boring, a sophomore at Stafford, his project was a wheelchair access to the courtyard at Drew Middle School. Ian Doughty, current sophomore at Stafford, his project was an outdoor classroom for Grafton Village Elementary School. Matt Havren is a current junior at Stafford, and his project was completed last summer at Drew Middle School, and he marked all the AEDs in the fire exits and painted the entire school. Philip Mance, a current freshman at Stafford High School, his project was to build an equipment shed for the Massed Marlins at Massed YMCA, I watched that being erected. Garrett Valencia, current freshman at Stafford High School, his project was to build benches for the new playgrounds at Grafton Village Elementary School. And Jacob Wright, a junior at Stafford, his project was to build benches along the walking path at the Stafford Civil War Park. So we also have three boys with projects that are waiting to be accepted. But this is obviously a very active troop, and as Paul said, they meet at Andrews Chapel, and kind of half of the troops in my district and half is in his, but we wanted to recognize you and thank you for all of your community efforts. You truly make a difference.
I tell you, we hear so much bad stuff these days about our young people, it's awful gratifying to hear the good stuff. At this time, I would like to ask two former supervisors and two gentlemen who served on the 350 Committee with me, Dr. Harry Crisp and Mr. Bob Gibbons, to join me up front. And I'd also like to ask Mr. William Leap and his team to come up front. I'm asking them to come up front because we're going to present a proclamation tonight to the team that did the videos for the Stafford 350th Anniversary. For those of you in the audience that are old enough to remember, I don't know if you remember the bicentennial minute, they did the bicentennial 10 minutes, so the 350 10 minutes, so if you'd join me up front, I'd appreciate it. I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce the sheriff of our county, who was also on the commission. You don't never forget the sheriff. Might be a good thing for me that he's retiring. You know I'm kidding, Charlie. We're going to miss you, buddy. This proclamation is going to recognize and commend the students of the Stafford High School, of Stafford County Public Schools Television and Video Arts Program for their contribution to Stafford County's 350th Celebration and production of the 350 Minutes video. Whereas the Stafford County Public Schools Television and Video Arts Program provided an important and lasting contribution to Stafford County's 350th Anniversary, and the following students, under the direction of teacher Mr. William Leap, when I call your name, raise your hand, okay, so everybody knows who you are, wrote, acted in, edited, and produced nine outstanding short videos on Stafford County's history. Ethan Burgess, Lacy Chambers, Kelly Cullen, Nia Cox, Forrest Deal, Joseph Grant, Christina Haynes, Madison Cobb, Nick Marshall, Joe Mason, Chandler Morgan, Matt Rollins, Wesley Splain, and Robinson Tran. Whereas these videos provided a lasting legacy of Stafford's 350th Anniversary Celebration, as well as a teaching tool for the students involved, and that it will be available in years to come, and I'm telling you, if you haven't seen these folks, you need to go online and look at them. I've lived here all my life, and I learned things I never knew. Now therefore be it resolved and proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of May 2015, that it be, and hereby does recognize and thank Mr. William Leap and his students for their outstanding work. You haven't changed your mind, you don't want to say anything? You're good to go. I would remind anyone that is in the audience, for the two public hearings on Winding Creek, those public hearings have been postponed to a later date, and they will be advertised when we decide on what date they'll come up. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Anita Dodd, who will come forth to recognize winners of the Historic Commission's Annual Preservation Awards. Ms. Dodd is chairman of the Historical Commission and will present the awards this evening. Come on up.
Okay. Good evening. This presentation is to coincide with the designation of May as Historic Preservation Month. The Stafford County Historical Commission has established a Historical Preservation Award Program. The program provides an opportunity for individuals, groups, organizations, and businesses to recognize the important role that historic preservation plays in individual lives, as well as in the community. It is important to celebrate the cultural history of Stafford County and contributions made by those dedicated to the preservation of its cultural heritage. The Stafford County Historical Commission is pleased to present the 2014 Historic Preservation Awards. This year, we have two awards to present. As your name is mentioned, please come to the front to accept your award. Our first award is being presented to Art Hart. Art is a, let me make sure she gets over here. Art is a member of the Stafford County Historical Society's Board, and has been heading up the Voices of Stafford Program since 2007. Art records all histories with Stafford individuals that have memories of Stafford County's past. They are full of interesting information about Stafford's cultural and historical heritage. He has recorded over 25 of these histories that are available on CDs in the Stafford branches of the Central Rappahannock Regional Library. They are also available on the Stafford County Historical Society's webpage. The Stafford County Historical Commission award you this and thanks you for your efforts in preserving Stafford County's heritage. Thank you. Our second award is being presented to the 350th Anniversary Blue Ribbon Committee, its partners, sponsors, subcommittees, and volunteers. Harry Crisp is going to be up with, and would you want to introduce the others that are with you?
Sure. I have with us this evening Mike Newhart, who was the vice chair of the committee, Sue Henderson, who was the program manager for the 350th Anniversary Program, Bob Gibbons, who served on the committee, and our sheriff Charlie Jett, who also served on the committee.
Thank you. The committee was formed to celebrate the 350th Anniversary of the founding of Stafford County in 1664. The committee used an innovative partnership with private, commercial, and civic groups, as well as Stafford government, to plan, create, and fund five signature events, as well as a lot of historic, artistic, and fun programming that honored Stafford's past, present, and future. Attended by more than 30,000 people, several of its initiatives became permanent Stafford County resources. The year-long celebration was kicked off on January 4th, 2014, with the Celebrate Stafford 350 Event. Celebrations throughout the year included a Founder's Day Parade and Arts Festival, the grand opening of Celebration Stage, a permanent, which is a permanent outdoor amphitheater, the Wings and Wheels Festival at the airport, a bus tour of the Trail to Freedom sites, the unveiling of a permanent African-American history mural at the Rousher Building, and a CD of Stafford's history, which is, if there's still copies left, is free to the public. Other initiatives included in our old history program, Tell Your Stafford Story administered by the George Washington Foundation, educational grants, and a history lecture series hosted by the library. The year-long celebration was a showcase of Stafford County, highlighting the breadth and richness of Stafford's 350 years of history. Mr. Crisp is accepting the award on behalf of all those involved. The Historical Commission thanks all those that participated in this year-long celebration. The Stafford County Historical Commission appreciates the efforts of tonight's award recipients, and for their concerted efforts in the participation, in the preservation of Stafford County's historical and cultural heritage. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anita. I just wanted to say a few words. Firstly, how greatly honored and proud we all are to receive this award. When the committee first started meeting, three and a half years ago now, one of the things that we wanted to make sure we did in planning the program was to create a lasting legacy, not just a big celebration. And so to receive this award tonight really makes us proud that we did our job the way we were supposed to.
Well, we're proud of your job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. At this time, we will have a presentation, the Quarterly Update, from Virginia Department of Transportation.
Chairman, members of the board, county staff, good evening. Just here to talk about a few of the projects that are still ongoing, some of the preliminary engineering projects. Route 17 Reconstruction is on track to be complete by the end of next year. Project completion is about 65%. Falmouth Intersection is on track to be complete September of this year. We're at about 55% complete there. The Route 1 Telegraph Road, which is managed by Federal Highways, Eastern Federal Lands, just had the final walkthrough on the 15th. They have some final punch list items, but that should be complete here shortly. Moving into the preliminary engineering projects, I-95 and Route 630 interchange, we are continuing to validate the traffic numbers, working on the IMR, environmental documents. The process for procuring design-build contracts-
Excuse me, Mr. Sterling has a question.
On that, the 630 interchange, so you're looking at yet another, more traffic studies on this, are we going forward with right-of-way procurement, or is that halted? Coming home this evening, and I don't know if anybody else got caught, there's an accident. Cars are backed up, they're backed up onto the freeway, one hit another. Police were out there, it was, created a huge jam of traffic, backed up past 610, because that thing is not up to speed yet. We were moving forward on the acquisition of the right-of-way, we're moving forward on everything until the governor stopped it. Where are we now? Is, are we moving forward, or is this going to be in a perpetual study mode?
Currently, right now, we are not moving forward with the right-of-way.
We're not buying any right-of-way. People of Stafford need to understand that yet that's been put on halt again by this administration.
We are currently validating the traffic numbers and updating the IMR. We should be finished with that mid to end of July, and then we will move into the procurement process for the design-build.
Maybe Mr. Milde can remind me, when was it that the Commonwealth of Virginia committed to the federal highways to get that interchange upgraded?
1991, I believe, Mr. Sterling.
1991, 25 years ago, almost.
Go ahead.
Moving on to the Route 610 and Anvil Road improvements, we re-advertised that project in February of this past year. We received no bids. Thus, consulting with the county, we have developed the plan to re-advertize it this fall in August, in hopes that it will become competitive with the winter season. It's a project that we foresee doing well during the winter time for construction. The Route 630 winding job, we'll be moving that project into the design-build as well with interchange. VDOT is continuing to work on the right-of-way, and we are starting utility relocations to keep that project moving. The Ferry Road intersection improvements, we're moving forward with that, and the right-of-way phase is scheduled to begin this fall. Moving on to some of the maintenance activities, continuing to battle some potholes, we have patched one area on Route 218 Butler, coming around the corner right there near the YMCA. Other locations that we're looking to patch are on Leland Road, we are patching Ely and Skyline, where we just completed two pipe replacements, and we are also looking to patch Arkendale. Some of the paving locations on the paving schedules to be completed this year, two sections on Route 610 out in the western Tulane section, 608, 648 between Poplar and Mountain View, 687, the Cannon Knoll subdivision, and the Hardwell Drive. And another update on the Leland and Primmer House signal, we are on schedule to complete that by July 20th. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Milde.
I just want to give you a couple of items to maybe make notes about.
Okay.
Now, I don't usually report potholes, but these are significant. The Eskimo Hill Road on the way to Landfill, at the low point right before the camp, the jail on the right, we are, not only do we have a pothole, but it seems the road is collapsing. I've noticed it for a few weeks, and I figured it would just get, somebody would pick it up, but I'm not sure it's on anyone's radar.
That is on our radar. There is a pipe that we are planning on replacing here shortly.
The road looks like it could, you could lose the road. It's already about several inches, seven or eight inches low on that.
Yeah, we're continuing to monitor that. It's going to be expedited, to be honest with you.
And on Brook Road, after you pass Poplar Hills and the new entrance to Crow's Nest, our shoulders seem to be collapsing there, and I guess that happens occasionally. It's been a while since I've noticed it, several years, but for hundreds of feet of the section, you have about the edge, two feet to the edge on both sides, continual cracks, and it's lowering, I guess, that's a very, very old railroad bed.
Okay.
And I think we need to take a look at that.
Mr. Cavalier.
I was glad to hear you mentioned Arkendale Road, because the CXX trucks are really tearing that up when doing the work that they're doing out there right now, and it's more than just potholes, I think you're aware of that.
Correct, it is.
And so what is the plan of action there?
Plan of action is, we're going to have our contractor go in there and do significant patching, roughly three inches deep of brand-new asphalt.
Okay, great. And what about Decatur Road? Not quite as bad, but it's-
We'll take a look at it.
-a lot of potholes.
Okay.
Ms. Bomke.
Yes, while we're on potholes, there are a number of potholes on the way down to City of Fredericksburg on White Oak Road, some right there before Chatham Manor, and some after in the right-hand lane. There are a number of others in my district that I've sent in, so-
Okay.
Is there a methodology? How do you decide?
Generally, if a pothole is reported, we try to get it repaired within 48 hours.
Oh, okay. Maybe I need to submit a new list. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sellers.
A couple of weeks before the last time you guys were here, I asked you guys to look at Legal Court, and I wanted to see if somebody went up there. The road, there was a big crack in the road.
Legal Court, I believe we repaved that.
Did you, I didn't know at the top. I know at the bottom of the Legal Court, because Legal Court's up on a hill into a cul-de-sac. At the top of the cul-de-sac, there was the crack. The bottom of the cul-de-sac has been repaved.
Yeah.
But I'll find out.
I'll double-check on it, but I was under the assumption that we paved the entire road.
Okay, maybe you did, but-
Maybe the crack came back.
Thanks.
Mr. Thomas.
Since we're talking about potholes, Route 601 Forest Lane Road, called that in about a week ago, because it caused a flat tire. So I have two questions. When somebody has a flat tire, it's clearly because there was a pothole in a blind corner that was the size of their tire, is there any recourse they have? Is there any sort of program where they can apply for some sort of relief to help fix that?
There is. They can file a claim, so essentially you just call the 1-800-4-ROAD number, and we'll give you all the documentation needed, file a claim, and we'll walk you through the process.
Very good to know. The second thing is, about three days later, it's sunk back down, so-
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
And then on Ferry Road, I think it's where it intersects Heritage, it looks like about 50 patch jobs altogether, and I know you guys are trying to make it drivable, but I think-
That is on the-
You know what I'm talking about, right?
That is on the paving schedule.
Do you know when that is?
It should be soon. That is one of the last routes they're getting on from the 2014 schedules.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing I would follow up was what Ms. Bomke asked, is there a methodology to your potholes? Are you going throughout the county, or are you just filling them as you get complaints, or?
We prioritize the ones that we get the complaints on, but we do, on a daily basis, drive around filling potholes.
Okay.
So there is a method to the madness, it's just-
Okay. I just had one question, sorry.
It's good to complain, then, right?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There's actually a really neat app called Waze, I think it's called.
Yep.
You use that? Because it's pretty darn accurate. I'm driving around town, and it says, hey, watch out for this pothole, and it's literally within 20 feet of where it says. I mean, I'm not sure if people are reporting those as they're driving.
Okay.
But it's useful information that may help you guys.
Hmm, a lot of people don't have a lot to do. Anything else for VDOT? Thank you very much for coming out to see me. This time, we're going to presentations by the public. I would ask if you have anything to discuss with the board, please come forward at this time, unless it's on the public hearing schedule tonight. When you come forward, I would ask you to give your name and address. You have three minutes. When you see the little green light come on, you can certainly start. The yellow light means that you have about 60 seconds, and when the red light comes on, if you could please take your seat, we'd appreciate it. I have two speaker cards. First is Mr. Vernon Green.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson and supervisors. My name is Vernon Green, as you stated. Recently retired military, settling here in the Stafford area, I've been here for about five years now.
Mr. Green, if we could get your address, that would be great.
I'm sorry, address. 221 Pear Blossom Road, Embry Mills off of Austin Ridge.
Thank you.
I don't have a presentation, I'm seeking information. As a small business owner, I'm looking to figure out how we get small business opportunities from the county, or from the Board of Supervisors. There are a lot of small businesses in the area. I have two with me, construction, cybersecurity, IT, financial services, community services, and we're just trying to figure out how we get information on how we can be of service to our community. There are a lot of projects going on, building, and we just want to know, is there a portal? Is there a way to let you know who we are? How do we do that?
Mr. Green, what I'll do is, I'll ask the county administrator to have someone get with you before you leave tonight to get your number. We do have Economic Development Department, and I'm sure they'd be more than willing, I know they would, to sit down with you and discuss it. So if I could ask the county administrator to get that information from you, and someone will be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out. My next speaker card is Mr. Paul Tracy.
Actually, I came to discuss the Winding Creek development, especially the cut-through on Embry Mill, which would negatively impact, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Paul Tracy, I live at 25 Wild Plum Court. That cut-through would negatively impact the traffic on Live Oak, and which also intersects at H. Poole Middle with Eustis, and would negatively impact our ability to get out safely and easily on that road. It is very difficult to see around the corners, it is, and traffic, as you well know, most people think of speed limits as anything but, and they're just not doing it. I just don't think we need that extra traffic for that cluster development. I know I'm not supposed to speak, I guess I'm not supposed to speak about the Winding Creek development.
No, you're okay. You're okay.
97 units in a cluster formation is totally out of character with the surrounding developments, ours and the other ones, and I think it's very possible that you're going into overdevelopment. We've already got 610, which was a nice, quiet little road when I moved here 18 years ago, and now rush hour traffic is worse than Route 3 down in Fredericksburg. How many, how long does it take before we can adequately support more housing, and especially this cluster? 18 feet apart is ridiculous. I wouldn't live in a place like that. I know there are some down on Route 1 that do, and all the way down into DC, but this is not that kind of an area. We don't need it that close. If you want to leave it farmland, put 27 houses in there, I have no objection. But 97 homes is just too many, it adds too much to it, adds too much to the traffic, and the Winding Creek, and the cut-through at Fireberry just won't work well for us at all. Thank you.
So this is for the public hearing? We'll have, oh, this is for the public hearing, so you're going to wait for the public hearing? Great, thank you so much. That's all the speaker cards I have for the public presentations. At this time, I'll open it up to the room. Anyone on my right-hand side would like to address the board on any subjects except a public hearing subject. Please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you folks. My name is Sandra Morofsky. I live at 508 Glen Eagle Drive in the Clearview Development, and I would like to beg your consideration on something for me. My concern is Mark Lindsey's name not being included on the proposal naming of the Aquatic Center. I'm a native of Stafford County. My children went to school with Mark and Jeff, and at that time, I knew them personally. And I think it's a discredit to Mark not to be included, and the reason I say that is his mom still lives here, and she lost her son at 43 years old. And that's a heartache that no one ever recovers from. And he left the area after winning his medals in order to make a living in the diving arena, because there was nothing close by for him to do that. And I know that Jeff Rouse has made a contribution to the community, and I'm not disputing that, but this aquatic center is to- disputing that, but this Aquatic Center is to recognize the contributions, the blood, sweat, and tears that these young families and young men went through to achieve those medals, and I would just greatly appreciate it if you folks would reconsider that, I'm a mother, and I can't imagine how his mom must feel, because not only of the loss of her son, but everything that her family went through so that he could become a gold medalist. I've left messages with all of the board, and some of them weren't too sweet, but I thank you so much for listening to me, and if you're not interested, or you don't want to consider renaming it, is it possible that this could come to a vote on a ballot in November? There, I know there are fewer natives here than ever before, but I'm sure there are a lot of people here that would like to have an input on this, we are citizens of the county, and we're taxpayers, and we're making a contribution to this center, which I'm grateful that we're going to have that, because our young people need inspiration, and folks to look up to, and I thank you for all of your efforts in getting this to come to fruition, I think it's very important, but I would just greatly appreciate it if you would reconsider this, and I thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right-hand side could address the board, yes ma'am?
Hi, my name's Heidi Simpson, I live at 31 Mustard Drive, and I'm also the Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and I echo the sentiments that were just spoken, I also would like you to reconsider for the future of Stafford County sports and athletics, and also as a mother, my children have swam for the last seven years in Stafford County, and we had a fellow teammate that had to quit swimming because of an injury, subsequently, he has decided to take up the sport of diving, unfortunately, he's unable to participate in diving because right now, we don't have that, what an inspiration it would be, since he's 16-years-old, gee, that kind of rings a bell from someone that we know, perhaps Mark Lindsey, that he could follow in Mark Lindsey's footsteps in the county that he was born and raised in, and perhaps get a scholarship, which he's already being scouted for at two schools, and he's only been diving for a year, and come from Stafford County. I request that you, I humbly request that you consider adding Mark Lindsey's name to the new facility, and not tagging a dilapidated Woodlands Pool with his name, which quite frankly, I felt is a slap in the face to his family and his memory, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right-hand side that would like to address the board, yes sir?
My name's Robert Morofsky, I'm Sandra's husband, I guess I can't top what she said, but it looks to me as though you're...
I'm assuming you're at the same address, right?
I hope so.
Could you please state your address over...
508 Glen Eagle Drive.
Thank you, sir.
But it looks to me on the surface, it doesn't look right, and it looks like you're marginalizing Mark Lindsey's accomplishments, and it's almost a snub, it looks like to me, and I think, I would just request you do the right thing and put both their names on there, and if you want to give accolades to Jeff, you know, in the facility, you could do that, but, I mean, otherwise, his name wouldn't have been on there in the first place if it wasn't for the Olympics, so, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate you giving some consideration.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate your comments, anyone else on my right-hand side? Seeing none, I'll move my left-hand side, anyone on the left that would like to address the board? Any of you boys, yes sir, in the back, come on up, will you come on up?
Go ahead, man, I want the last word.
Hi, Timothy Mance, 62 Olive Place, Falmouth, but I'm in the George Washington District, I'm inspired by this young lady talking tonight, I wasn't going to talk, but I am going to speak, Stafford County made a decision here recently, at Stafford County High School, to eliminate the Stafford STAT Engineering Program at Stafford High School, they want to eliminate it, and then they want to consolidate those 103 super-students at Stafford High School, and bus them to North Stafford every day, by eliminating the STAT Engineering Program at Stafford High School, I think we do a disservice to the students, my son is enrolled, there are about seven Boy Scouts here tonight, that you mentioned, most of them are going to be an Eagle Scout here soon, that are all in that engineering program, we have other young men here that want to be in that engineering program at Stafford High School, but a decision's been made to eliminate the program, I think we're going in the wrong direction, in fact, when you look out in the state of Virginia, there are 20, the STAT are what they call STEM programs at the state level at Virginia, in the state of Virginia, there's 23 counties and cities in Virginia that participate in this program, and those number of counties and cities, and the high schools in those counties are growing exponentially for the STAT, well, the STEM Engineering Program, and I think it's important we keep it at Stafford High School, in fact, in the last year in the state of Virginia, they have expanded the STAT Engineering Program in Harrisonburg, Hampton, Richmond, Richmond County, Fairfax, and here we are in Stafford County, I'm so proud we have the STAT program, but I really don't think we need to eliminate it from Stafford High School, I think we need to retain the engineering program that's already in place with a certified teacher and 103-strong students, and continue the program, we're doing our part in Boy Scouts, we took the 60 Boy Scouts to West Point three weeks ago, for the largest campery in the United States, why, to learn about engineering, we're going to take these young men to the Naval Academy, because only fair, if you go see the Army, you've got to see the Navy and the Marines, and Meg, I know your son's at the Naval Academy, and a lot of these boys will probably serve in one of those academies, but they want to be engineers, and they want to take the course in Stafford High School, so please reconsider and not eliminate the program at Stafford High School, and we're real proud of these young men, we look forward to going to the Naval Academy, why, to learn about engineering, so help us, help these young men, and we're real proud of all of them, these are a future generation of leaders, and a lot of them are future generation engineers, but we need that program to stay at Stafford High School, so please help us, and I've talked to Dr. Benson, and I've been to two school board meetings with other students, and they even did, a student did a petition, got signatures, over 100 signatures, and submitted it to the school board last week, I was so proud of that young man because he self-initiated, so help us if you can, thank you very much, we appreciate being here tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, I'm glad you said you've been to the school board because you know good, because they make that decision, as a matter of fact, I didn't even know the decision had been made, so...
Well, we didn't either, but we've been hearing about it from the newspaper, and from hearsay, but we've received nothing as parents in a formalized letter, when these young men and ladies had to put a packet together, had to do a group interview, and were accepted to the program, so it's not, it has rigor to it, and we, and the boys and the ladies that received their letters saying, congratulations, you got accepted to this engineering program, because it's a Stafford program, it's a STAT program, it's a STEM program, so where's the letter?
Sir, I can't answer your question, but I would encourage you to continue to go to the school board, and I appreciate your comments.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left that would like to address the board? Mr. Waldowski, I think you have the last word.
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane, SKI is Standards, Knowledge, and Imagination, ma'am, trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent, I just wrote them down just to let you know, Life Scout, 31 merit patches, my dad was an Eagle, but I'm here to remind the board of my county water and sewer bill at 8 Pickett Lane, the one I don't get in Stafford Meadows, and I did bring a letter today that I will leave, and it was sent to my tenant, and it says, regarding all residents of stack-style condominium units at Stafford Meadows, as many of you are aware, the stack-style condominium units of Stafford Meadows condo association were installed with poly, I call it butt lean, pipes for water supply, because they're a pain in the butt, and I have to commend this young man who wrote this letter, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but these pipes were cheap, they didn't use copper like my father did, it's flawed, we've had the Utilities Department and the Utilities Commission do a 13-page memorandum, 2011, it's still not on a capital improvement program, the CIP is coming up, and it's nowhere near that, and we're not the only subdivision, there's 29 other subdivisions that I am aware of in Stafford County, according to that memorandum, that have the same problem. So you know, you're working on things like UDAs, remember, and they're going away, I call them the undeveloped areas, and now you're going to change them to TGAs, so I'll piggyback off the guy from the townhouse, from the Windy Creek area, and here's what I call TGAs, okay, I call them townhouse growth areas, you know, that's a little closer than 18-feet for single-family houses, I too have been here now 25-years, 1990, the county was 61,000, and the census in 2010 was 128,961, see, Boy Scouts, I'm prepared, I'm not reading it, I know it, my nickname is Waldo, you'll see me on the Facebook page very soon, and you'll be able to wonder, where's Waldo, you'll be able to Twitter him, you'll be everywhere, I've been an activist over 20-years, fighting for a county water and sewer bill for the widowers, the single moms, the book hauler workers who are making it day-to-day because the HOA stole $32,000 from them over five-years.
Thank you, sir, anyone else on my left that would like to address the board? Anyone else in the chamber? Seeing none, I'll close public presentations, we had an add-on from this afternoon's session that we're going to take up now, which is a resolution, Resolution R15-207, a resolution appointing First Sergeant Duante Throne-Diggs to the Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission, Ms. Sellers?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve R15-207.
Motion and second, and discussion, hearing none, cast your votes, tally the votes, motion passes 7 to 0. Item number 22, Public Works Joint Public Hearing with VDOT to Consider the FY2016 21 Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Program, Mr. Rapp?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christopher Rapp, Director of Public Works, tonight we present for your consideration the Virginia Department of Transportation Physical Year 2016 through 2021 Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Program, this is a joint VDOT Stafford County public hearing, and VDOT is in attendance. Stafford County's Physical Year 2016 allocation is $433,078, VDOT is estimating an allocation of $405,443 for each of the six years within this period, the remaining funding of the six-year program comes from the state fund for unpaved roads, and that amount ranges through the six years from 41, approximately $41,000 to 0 in 2021. The majority of the funding is assigned to road construction projects like Popular Road, Mountain View Intersection, the Leland Road Signal Installation, Bell's Hill Road, and Courthouse Road, Centport Parkway has been fully funded through previous funds, each year a portion of the funding is also set aside for completion of the unpaid roads in the county, using a priority previously set by the board. This proposed plan provides funding for the following, intersection of Popular and Mountain View, the Courthouse Road widening, the Leland Road, Primer House Road Signal, and Bell's Hill Road, also funding for rural paving projects, Cookley Lane, Southern View Drive, Corey Road, and Juggins Road. Staff recommends approval of Resolution R15-131 to adopt the Virginia Department of Transportation Physical Year 2016 through 2021 Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Program, and if approved, staff will provide the resolution to VDOT by May 31 of this year.
Any questions, Mr. Rapp, Mr. Sterling?
So the 433 is the, of that 405 of the 433 is the telefees?
Yes, sir.
In other words, those are by law, those are the funds that are raised here and to be used for our roads?
Yes, sir.
So the state's really only allocating 41,561, $41,000 to the secondary road system, which is, just in case everybody's aware, that's pretty much everything but 17-1 and I-95, the stretch of 3 through Thomasville District, correct?
Um...
Or total allocation?
The, the 41,000 is the highest year in FY16.
That's the highest year, so it's zero in some years?
The last year...
The state's not putting any money onto the table for the secondary roads in Stafford County in some years?
In the very last year, in 2021, there's zero in unpaid funds.
I'd be curious, can you, and if you can't provide that now, maybe VDOT can, what is the state committing to the secondary roads of Arlington County?
I'll let VDOT answer that if you can, I'm not sure Mr. Rapp could.
Of course, a couple of comments, I do not have that figure with me, with regards to Arlington, the $0 figure for the unpaid roads in 2021 is a result of the formula sunsetting in 2020, and thus far, the state has not come up with the plan on how they're going to allocate unpaid road funds post-2020, so that's why that is zero, but there should be funds there available.
The most that we have is 41,561 that the state is putting towards the vast majority of Stafford roads, I mean, again, except for Route 1.
Correct.
A little bit of Route 3 and 17, the state is committing 41,000.
That's correct.
That's pretty telling, I'm going to...
Anything else, Mr. Sterling?
No, I'm going to be voting no on this, just, let's just vote four, it's $41,000, I can go find that in my couch cushions.
Okay, Michael, just interrupt, the Boy Scouts are leaving, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out, we really do appreciate it, and thanks for what you do.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Rapp or for VDOT?
Yes, I have one.
Ms. Sellers?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
I emailed you earlier, but I thought it was last week when I attended the FAMFO Information Session, when they went over the difference between allocated and obligated, I had no idea until last week, can you share with folks what that, what the difference is?
So, the question again was the, and this is language that VDOT uses, it's very specific language, the difference between allocation and obligation, obligation is used for federal funds, and the best way I can explain it is an allocation, it's money that you set aside for the current or future years, where an obligation, that's where it's limited to the current year, and it's when you have a federally-funded project, and VDOT asks for permission to expend those funds and to obligate those funds for that year, so and then, so you're approaching the time where you're going to actually pay the contractor, so an allocation is for current or future years, and obligation is actually you're obligating that money for a future payment.
Anything else, Ms. Sellers?
And so, kind of how they explained it last week too, to add on to that, is things, once in the allocation phase, things can still change, and I noticed in your presentation, you have it's fully funded, and that's where my question comes up, is because what does that mean, and I learned last week that it depends, so it could be, the money could be allocated, and then next year, it could still change, whereas if it's obligated, right, is my understanding, I don't know if, am I saying, I see VDOT shaking their head.
Yeah, it's allocated, the six-year plan is not 100% set in stone, an obligation would be asking the federal... An obligation would be asking the federal government for permission to spend that money and commit it and receive that money to pay a contractor.
Okay.
Ms. Bomke?
Yes, I just have a question about the signal installation, item number four over at Leland and Primer House. It's supposed to be completed in July. Okay, the 61,672, we know that project is a lot more than that. But then when you go to the next sheet, and we have the Leland Road over there, we have the SSYP funds and then the other funds. So the additional funding needed, is that only for the light? Because the rest of the funding for that, I believe, is already in place, but I'm a little confused. And maybe Mr. Dayton can address that as well.
We have enough funds for that project, and that's why it's moving forward, because we have enough funds. It may show some additional funds in 2017, but there's enough funding that we have currently to provide for that project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, Mr. Sterling?
No, no, just on the allocation versus obligation. The best way to think of it is the allocation's your planned budget, and your obligation is you're committing when you get to a legal state where you're putting the money, you're going to be signing the contracts with the builder, the contractor, et cetera.
I thought there was a year associated, like, two years, or there were years associated with these things as well?
Well, the allocations, you're going to allocate all the money in the six-year plan, so you're setting a budget up that's according to the six-year plan. Your obligations, you've got to have money that covers the cost of a project within a year of completion. So if you complete a project out here on the roads, you've got to have the money that's committed, and that will be going towards paying that contract off within a year of it.
So, I don't know if this is appropriate for us. But so, what we're looking at right now, the six-year plan, what of that can change? I mean, how set in stone is it, or what?
Well, as we saw, they've taken, we've now gone through two years of pretty major reductions in this area on the six-year plan. So six-year plan, a number of projects funded, fully funded, a bunch of that money was taken off. For example, they took about, I think it was around 50, 60 million off the Courthouse interchange. At the same time, the secretary committed 60 million to a trolley system up in Arlington. It was so bad, the Arlington County Board of Supervisors canceled it because there was such outrage. So money can shift around at the whim of essentially what happens there. Goes from good projects to trolleys.
Any other questions, Mr. Rapp? Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing. Once again, I would ask that you give your name and address when you come to the podium. You have three minutes to speak on this subject. When the green light comes on, it's go. And the yellow light, you have about a minute, and the red light is, please stop. I do have one speaker card, Mr. Scott Benning.
Good evening. My name is Scott Benning. I'm on 8 Daffodil Lane, just off of Bell's Hills Road, and also the Vice President of the Moncur Estates Homeowners Association. So I'm here representing a lot of families that live off of that road. And Mr. Sterling, I share your concern about the state funding. However, I would highly recommend that you approve us move forward with this proposal. Two people I want to thank for really their responsiveness, so Mr. Dayton and also Robert Portier from VDOT, who, over the past year, have been extremely responsive to addressing our concerns off of Bell's Hills Road. Now, the county built or approved a neighborhood on both east and west side of that country highway that exists on Bell Hill Road. Because what happens on Bell's Hills Road now is that when 95 backs up, Route 1 backs up. And so Bell's Hills Road runs on both ends of Route 1, which now becomes a superhighway for everybody that wants to beat the fifth car in front of them up to the other end of Route 1. And it is a highway. There is already a 35 mile an hour speed limit, which is now a residential road, not a country road. And in proving that that neighborhood be on both sides of Bell's Hills Road, you also only required the builder to put a playground on one side of Bell's Hills Road, which now has kids crossing Bell's Hills Road when that road backs up from one end to the other of cars trying to get down to the other end, which is also on a curve. There are no crosswalks, there are no markings or anything on that road, and the shoulder is deteriorating to the point that we're almost down to a lane and a half vice two lanes of traffic. We're going to get somebody killed there. So we need that road to be paved, for the safety of our children, if for nothing else. Three weeks ago, there was a car upside down on that road. I don't know why it was upside down, but I can only imagine that they probably hit into one of those shoulders, probably going too fast, and upside down on that road. I only pray that we don't have a child wrapped up into one of those, because there's also no sidewalks on that road. There are a lot of townhomes along that road as well, of which people are walking from one end to the other. In the new neighborhood that you have for Bell's Hills neighborhood there, you've required them to put a sidewalk in. It's the only sidewalk on the entire road, right in the middle of the road, that goes to nowhere. And so there's lack of really foresight in any of the development. I would also encourage, and VDOT tells me that they can't do this for the mere fact that it doesn't meet requirements, that there be four-way stops on Bell's Hills Road. I have experienced in this. I did installation management on the world's largest naval station, and we had people getting hit in crosswalks. We put four-way stops up, and all of a sudden, people stopped getting hit in crosswalks. Why? Because now you require people to slow down. They have to stop at a stop sign and recognize that there might be somebody in that crosswalk. Right now, there's, none of that stuff exists. And if you don't approve this proposal, and I guess my question would be, is if this is approved, when does it occur? Because if somebody dies in that sidewalk or along that road, I can tell you, I'm the first person at the next board meeting, and then we're going to have another discussion about why we didn't do something about it as a county. I'm over my time, and I apologize. Pretty passionate, but our neighbors are very adamant about wanting to have something done about that road before somebody dies on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my, anyone in the room, that's the only speaker card I have, anyone in the room that would like to speak on this issue? On my right, I see no one.
Paul Wildowski, Eat Pickin' Lane. Well, one of my favorite topics. We now have a four-way stop sign at Mountain View at Pickin' Lane, just like you're going to do the Mountain View and Poplar, which has a T, so you don't have to worry about that aspect. However, $41,000, I can't find that in my mattress, but that's not really a significant amount of money. And it truly shows that this six-year plan reminds me of my days in the Air Force when I studied about the communists, and the Politburo had a five-year plan. And your six-year plan looks just like their five-year plan. You've created sidewalks to nowhere, you've got public safety issues all over the place. You know, let's be honest, Bell Hill Road should have never been developed, period. It was in a major artery that splits the county in half. But you know what? We can't change history. There should have been treetops there instead of rooftops. So what are we going to do to move forward? Isn't it funny that Center Pork already has all its funding there? Many of you don't realize the Center Pork Parkway, the reason it has all that funding is because when all the torrential rains first came out there, there was so much stormwater issues in that area that the whole interchange for the interstate system had to be dealt with. And then everyone's all in uproar about the interstate system on the Eisenhower system on Exit 140. You know, VDOT brought a really key plan that's a divergent highway, that's a 21st-century entity, and it's one of those carefully looked-out safety aspects that needs to be taken care of. This whole country has problems with its whole road infrastructure. If you remember in Michigan, we had cars that fell right off the interstate in the bridge. We've got roadways that are just atrocious on what's going on. Just this morning, Shelton Shop Road, an SUV was hit by, I believe the first one was one of those trucks that says, "Don't follow me," but someone else was following him. So when 648, which is a major artery going north and south, is not connected to 610 to Mountain View, and it's not correctly taken care of, then your six-year wonder is just a wonder. It's about time that those of you who are real planners get some looks at the topology of this infrastructure, and let's straighten it out.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the board? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion? Is that moved?
Now, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Thomas. Second by Mr. Milde. Discussion. Mr. Milde?
Well, luckily, this is a public hearing, so I can respond to a couple of things. Traffic calming, four-way stops definitely work. We had them installed on Jason Lane, where Water Tower is. It's processed, these roads are owned by and controlled by the state, so we have to go through their procedures. And they change them occasionally, and they probably have changed a little bit since then. And so you're not the first to request, down the hill, of course, where the towns are, they started experiencing this 10 years ago, and I've been hearing about it ever since. I represent the area. And we've done a bunch of little spot improvements, spent several hundred thousand dollars on the road. We don't, we didn't, in the sense that we had a, we couldn't have not approved, we can't, we didn't have a decision, a decision to approve or not approve that subdivision, those subdivisions on either side. That's the old Moncur, literally Moncur Estates and George Gordon. And those were rezoned to their R2 status or R1 in the '70s or early '80s, way before any of us, I think, any of us were involved. So what happened to that point is we're stuck with the having to, we can, we have to allow the development with very little ability to make them put sidewalks in, for instance. So I hate to pass the buck, but we were trying, we've been trying ever since to catch up on that road, and we'll continue to do so. And I'll give you my card before you leave.
Thank you, Mr. Milde. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote. Cast your votes, please. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. Item number, item number 25, County Administration, Consider Construction Financing at the Rappahannock Regional Landfill. Mr. Dayton?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Keith Dayton, Deputy County Administrator. With your indulgence, the next two items are closely related, 25 and 26. If I may, I'll go ahead and complete some background discussion on both of those. The, with respect to item 25, landfill financing, the construction of our next solid waste cell, F2, must be completed by the end of this year, or we'll run out of capacity. We recognize this, and we proceeded with the design for the next cell. That was completed, offered for bids. We received five bids in response to that solicitation. Our lowest bid was from T&amp;K Construction, just over $5 million. We did review that bid and believe it's responsive and appropriately priced. That construction also requires mitigation of wetlands. We solicited mitigation credits, just under $100,000 was the lowest offered. That would need to be done also in conjunction or ahead of the construction. We also have to mitigate for stream impacts. That matter is item 26 on the agenda, and I'll get to that in just a moment. Although the R-Board does have reserve funds, all of the funds remaining to it are in the restricted category, and they are restricted to cover closure and post-closure responsibilities that the R-Board has. As a joint powers agreement organization, the R-Board does not have the authority to incur debt. Working with our financial advisors, Ms. Parrot and I came up with a strategy to fund Cell F2. That would be to use a limited amount of R-Board reserves, about $1,070,000. Combine that with net proceeds from a financial sale of bonds, basically, requiring backing by Stafford County and Fredericksburg, net proceeds from each locality in the amount of $2,500,000, which gives us a total of $5,169,449 that we need to proceed for construction. This debt would be secured by a pledge of revenue from the R-Board, from our tipping fee revenues. Therefore, this debt will not impact the debt service limits that have been established by board policy. We are recommending that the debt authorization be for a total of 2.25 million per locality, 4.5 million total. That will allow us to cover the debt issuance costs that will go with the sale of bonds, and also to give some additional flexibility in the financing terms, hopefully to lower overall debt costs. We estimate conservatively that our annual debt service for seven years to pay back the total loan will be $700,000 again per year. That is, we believe, is on the high side. We have included this expense in the proposed FY2016 R-Board budget, which the R-Board hopefully will act upon at their meeting tomorrow. This proceeding in this manner was endorsed by the R-Board at their April meeting. We have to hold a public hearing in order for the board to consider authorizing the issuance of debt. We, the board authorized this public hearing at their April 21 meeting, and we have appropriately advertised that, this public hearing. We recommend approval of R-15-140, which will authorize our participation in the fall Virginia Resources Authority bond pool in the approximate amount of up to 2.25 million from Stafford County. Item 26 relates to the conservation easement, which would only be necessary if we proceed with construction of Cell F2. The first thing that will happen out there is we'll impact streams that are on the property. We have estimated about just over 5,000 lineal feet of stream will be impacted, and this must be mitigated. Typically, that's done in three ways. One way would be to purchase stream mitigation credits. Those are difficult to find in an acceptable location from a bank, and they're very expensive to purchase. You can also find some stream that's been damaged and restore it. That's also very time-consuming and expensive. Or you can dedicate an appropriate conservation easement if you can find the property acceptable to the regulatory agencies. In this case, we did find a 43.4 acre area on R-Board property, which is jointly owned by the city and the county. It is just to the north of the Civil War Park and straddles two different streams, one of which is Akikke Creek, that transects R-Board property. We expect that proceeding to dedicate a conservation easement will save about $3 million in mitigation costs to the project budget. The area in question is a lighter-colored area, again, just north of the Civil War Park and to the east. It is, runs around the Civil War Park, cannot be used for any number of reasons, for landfill activities. It currently serves as a buffer area, so there's no value lost to the R-Board, but there will be, I think, value gained by the Civil War Park in basically expanding the protected area around that park. Again, the landfill property is jointly owned by Fredericksburg and Stafford. Fredericksburg has already acted to relinquish ownership in not only this 43.4 acres, but the 41.2 acres of the Civil War Park, relinquish it back to Stafford. The board took action earlier today to authorize acceptance of this transfer. So now it leaves Stafford, and the board must conduct a public hearing prior to any action to dissolve an interest in property. We do recommend approval of R-15-10, authorizing the dedication of a conservation easement at the Rappahannock Regional Landfill. And that concludes...
Any questions, Mr. Dayton? Ms. Sellers?
Okay, if we don't approve the debt, us borrowing the money for the new cell, what happens to the landfill?
If we don't go forward with construction of Cell F2, we will run out of capacity by December of this year. There are no other obvious options available to us to proceed to construct Cell F2. We do have reserves, but that has... We do have reserves, but that has its own risks, because we have a very real and short-term obligation to complete closure costs out there, and if DQ asked us to proceed to do that, and we drew down those funds, we would have another problem on our hands.
So, basically, if we don't approve this, we shut, we essentially stop picking up trash in Stafford. We don't have a landfill anymore.
It would cease taking, transporting solid waste to the Eskimo Hill landfill. There may be other alternatives that a commercial hauler would have, other places they can take it, but they would not be able to take it to Eskimo Hill.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Cavalier.
What's the expected life of the new cell F2?
Mr. Cavalier, it's expected to last seven years. That is not only using our current rates, but some projected increase in solid waste volumes each year. So, seven years is a, is a sound conservative number.
And that's the, and that's the scheduled time for the payoff of the debt also, too. So, seven years from now, we're back in the same boat unless we come up with another solution in the interim, correct?
Yes, sir.
No.
Wait a minute, hold on. Any other questions? He said, Mr. Dayton said that is correct, seven years.
Right. Well, I think you missed into the question, because we don't know what our budgets are going to look like for the next seven years, and we don't know what kind of revenue we're going to get from the commercial haulers or the, or the county or the other side. So, there's so many uncertainties, we're not even sure what this budget year is going to look like, whether we're going to have a surplus, break even, or come, or have to go negative again. So, it's impossible for you to tell me that we're not going to.
Well, he's not, he's not, he said under current circumstances, is that correct?
That's correct. If, if we do not replenish our reserve fund and have unrestricted reserves in seven years, which we, the R Board is certainly working in that direction, we would be faced with a similar circumstance. But the R Board is looking at all opportunities to increase revenue.
Any other questions, Mr. Dayton?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Bomke.
Okay, as you all know, I've shared with you that this is a, an issue in my district with the concerns of the landfill, and people are still very upset about the additional charging of fees to use the landfill, but we know that we had no other choice. Okay, when you reference the reserves in here, the reserve fund balance of $5,909, then we have our closure cost, and then our operating reserve, are we meeting the needs of our, our maintenance fees and all of the other reserves that we need to have in place with the, just the $1 million that we're applying to the F2 construction?
Ms. Bomke, the plan that you have in front of you draws down reserves. The proposed FY 2016 budget that the R Board will consider tomorrow does not show replacement or increase of those reserves in the next fiscal year. So, in the short term, I'd have to say the answer is, is no. We're not funding back our reserves in a manner that, as a manager of a landfill, I would like to see. We would like to look at other long-term approaches to increase the reserve fund.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't think that we were where we needed to be. And the other thing I would just like to bring up, I mean, I'm in support of doing this, because I feel like our hands are tied and we don't have any choice, but I just want to bring up with the board that over the next couple of years, and in the next three to four months, I would like to bring an issue before the board to talk about, over the next five years, including the landfill as an essential service of government as it relates to our county general fund. I know I'm getting looks from some people, but I have heard from people in my community, they said the landfill is as essential as social services, fund, education, et cetera. And so, I, I know that's a conversation for another day, but I would just like to bring that up. Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Thomas.
Question for Mr. Dayton. So, it sounds like a little over a million is going to come out of the reserve fund, but I think what I heard is we're done taking out of the reserve fund, we're not going to be using the reserve for operations anymore like we had in the past. That's.
That is correct.
At least hit the bottom, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Thomas. Other than the capital costs that we're looking at this year, we're not expecting to draw down reserves any further, certainly not for operational purposes.
Glad to hear it.
Any other questions for Mr. Dayton?
Well, no more questions, I have things to say.
We'll say it after the motions, after the public hearings. Any other questions? Okay, there's going to be two public hearings, because they're two entirely different subjects, even though we've covered both at one time. First public hearing is item number 25, Consider Construction Financing at the Rappahannock Regional Landfill. Please state your name and address, and as before, you have three minutes. I have no speaker cards. Anyone on my right-hand side that would like to address the board on this subject?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane. Do I get six minutes or three minutes?
You get three, there are two public hearings.
Okay, thank you. Well, low bid is low quality, number one. You ought to join the six-year program. You know, you're on the seven-year program. And you need to explicitly tell the public, how much interest are you paying on that seven years? And also, I do appreciate that you did give us the $1,070,000, you know, $70,000 isn't under the mattress like some of you think it is. And also, I want the public to be aware of that this was advertised twice, and they never disclose to you, but advertising a public hearing is not free, and there's a cost associated with that. And I guess we'll just take that out of your $1,070,000, right, out of reserves. Now, what really interests me the most is how you have these three estimated ways of doing things, and all of a sudden, we're going to build this conservation easement, and that's going to solve all our problems and make the Civil War Park, you know, that's give it a little more buffer. And for those of you who don't know me, I do like treetops, not rooftops, so that's probably a positive aspect. But what concerns me the most is if I'm here in 2022, we're going to have redistricting done by then, and cell F2 is supposedly going to be filled up by then. I'm a mathematician, I believe all your calculations are, don't even have a variance. You should have a variance and a confidence interval of where you're going to be, because you're going to bring us up in the same boat we're in right now, which is just barely floating. As a matter of fact, the boat's sinking, and I think that boat needs to go to probably Bell's Hill Road on a sidewalk to nowhere.
Anyone else like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, and I have a second discussion. Mr. Milde.
I just want to continue that conversation. The, we are, we are looking at multiple ways that we think we can increase revenue. They, we have not ruled out anything, including some, you know, some huge ideas, of course, other ways of processing trash, but we certainly know, and we made it clear in the same room at our board meeting, that we're losing all of our trash to county waste and, who's the other big one? Waste management. And they're taking our, their trash to other, their landfills, and they've stopped using our landfill, because we raised our prices to try to increase revenue, and they just made it easy, made it more beneficial for them to take their trash, repackage it, in some cases, and send it to their landfills. We mentioned something called flow control. One of our aces in the hole may be something called flow control, where there's a law in Virginia that says we're allowed to make, make haulers take their trash, local trash to a local landfill unless the landfill that they're using is pre, you know, predates a certain date, and that was a long time ago. So, we, we have a few things we could do to become more competitive, run our landfill as a business. We have seen what happens when we don't. We are definitely not running this as a business, it's more of a, in someone else's words, a boutique operation, where we just try to capture the trash here, and we're not really worried about the numbers add up, and now we're having to pay, start paying for it. So, I just would not give up on the idea that we can, this is going to be a huge sucking sound, you know, coming from the landfill indefinitely. Maybe that does happen, but we're in better shape than people would believe that we are. We don't owe any money. We have five or $6 million in restricted, in restricted reserve, but not bad for a business. And, you know, and right now, the county, to date, hasn't subsidized the landfill, and in places like Spottavania County, they're spending $2 million a year to subsidize their landfill.
$2.6.
So, I just, I don't want to give up on the idea that we can make this run a little bit better.
Any other discussion, Mr. Thomas?
I have a question for Mr. Dayton. The low bidder, if memory serves, that's the same company that built the last cell?
Yes, T&amp;K Constructors built cell F1.
And how would you characterize our satisfaction with that previous cell? How did that work out?
By all accounts, they did a, did a good job.
Okay, so, low bidder, hopefully this time is good quality as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and in the report that's on the internet, there's a 5% interest rate with an estimate of $716,000 in debt service. Stafford's half of that would be $358,000, and that's worst-case scenario. Hopefully, the rates come in better?
Yes, we expect better than 5%.
Okay. I'm going to be in support of this motion. I think the solution that's in front of us is another good solution from our finance staff. I think we get a lot of mileage out of our bond counsel. They really do help us think outside the box in ways we can do this. You know, Mr. Sterling was asking me, you know, you're sure that this doesn't affect our overall debt service capacity, because we have that, you know, fully funded towards a lot of priorities, and this is a solution that does that. I'm very happy to hear that the landfill after this year is no longer going to be drawing from reserves for operations. I think that's step one in a get well plan, so I will be in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other comments? Seeing none, I ask for the vote. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 26, the presentation has already been made, authorize the dedication of a conservation easement at the Rappahannock Regional Landfill. Got to have the public hearing. The presentation has been made, the public hearing is not. Anyone on my right-hand side would like to address the board on this? Seeing none, anyone on my left? Never expected to, Mr. Waldowski, never expected to.
My buddy there. Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane, the ace in the hole, you know? You got three Rs, all right. Ready? Let's see, restricted, raise, and revenue. Well, revenue minus expenses is how a business is run. They don't do it with ace in the hole, but if you want, we can hold a Texas holding game or Omaha game, and we can generate some revenue on behalf of the landfill. I'd be glad to be the tournament director, so I'm trying to give you a different way of doing it. Now, low bid, low quality is subjective, but also.
Mr. Waldowski, the public hearing, or conservation?
Okay, I'm getting to the conservation, because the conservation part is, has to do with the low bid, good quality, which is subjective. The conservation part, I made my comments earlier in the aspects, and I'll just reinforce them, and I'll give back my time, like we do in the Senate, for another time. But I think the conservation part is a great thing, because we got treetops, no rooftops, and we just got to work on that revenue aspect, and we'll be okay.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board at this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion for approval? Mr. Milde, motion, Ms. Sellers, a second. Do I have discussion? Yes, Ms. Bomke.
I just have a question as it relates to the conservation easement. We have the wonderful Civil War Park around that. Will they be able to expand the current Civil War Park on any of that property? Or is that property protected as a conservation easement?
Mr. Dayton.
What are the options?
Ms. Bomke, there will be a deed of dedication that will be transferred over, basically, Department of Environmental Quality. Corps of Engineers is also involved in regulatory matters. They will then control any action which happens relative to the 43.4 acres. They could certainly be petitioned to allow us to dedicate it to the Civil War Park. They may or may not go along with that proposal, but I think importantly enough, there's, the language in the easement will not allow any development activity within that easement unless approved by the regulatory agency. So, in effect, that whole area is protected, and it's adjacent to the Civil War Park, so I think if anything, it enhances that park.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Seeing no more business on the agenda, we will adjourn until June 2, 3:00 p.m. Thank you very much.